Please stand and salute the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good evening, everyone, and thanks for coming to our last board meeting for this year. I am really, really excited that through it all, we are here today celebrating the end of another school year. Come on, everyone. In accordance with the Open Public Meeting Act, Chapter 231, adequate notice of this meeting has been provided as follows. On January 10, 2023, notice was sent to the home news tribune, the Star Ledger, Union County Local Source, and the clerk of the municipality. This is a no smoking area. By state law, there is no smoking permitted in this building at any time. In addition to the listed items in this agenda, this Board of Education may discuss and act upon other items not specifically referred to herein as is allowed at the regularly scheduled monthly board meeting under the Sunshine Law. Roll call.
Ms. Thomas.
Present.
Ms. Armstead.
Here.
Ms. Carrillo.
Present.
Ms. Sintron.
Present.
Mr. Dela Cruz.
Present.
Mrs. Fleming.
Ms. Pino.
Present.
Ms. Rosada Casada.
Present.
Dr. Burghammer.
Present.
Our next agenda item is motion to approve the minutes of the special meeting held on May 23, 2023, the regular meeting held on May 22, 2023, and the special meeting held on June 13, 2023. Copies in hand of board members.
Motion to approve the minutes?
Second.
Any discussion?
No.
Okay. Roll call.
Ms. Thomas.
Yes.
Ms. Armstead.
Yes.
Ms. Carrillo.
Yes.
Ms. Sintron.
Yes.
Mr. Dela Cruz.
Yes.
Ms. Pino.
Yes.
Ms. Rosada Casada.
Yes.
And Dr. Burghammer.
Yes. I always say, what is a meeting without hearing from the public? So, members of the public desiring to make a public comment may come forward at this moment. For those watching online, if you wish to make a comment or ask a question, please utilize the raise your hand feature on this online meeting platform. Please begin your comments by stating your name and address. Individuals are invited to speak on one topic at a time, and no individual will speak more than once unless all individuals so desiring have spoken once. The public is reminded that to ensure the efficient and orderly operations of the meeting, members of the public will be limited to speaking on agenda items for three minutes.
Good evening, everybody. My name is Craig Hallern. I live at 120 Donaldson Place. This is about an agenda item in a finance report on pages 65 and 66. Item number 44, the individual line item is number nine on page 65, and item number 63 on page 66. I just have a question. There's two different bus companies or transportation companies listed. Are these the same companies or what? It's Dapper Bus Company and George Dapper, Inc. Are they the same company?
Yeah, it does appear that it is that. We could, when we move that item, we could just remove number nine.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. We have a quiet public here today. I guess you're very pleased with what we have accomplished this year. Thank you very much. Is there anyone online?
No.
One online? Okay. I'll start, please. Our next agenda item is our superintendent's report.
Thank you, Madam President. Before I go into the meat of my report, we have two presentations this evening, both of which that we're extremely proud of. The two groups that we have this evening is our relay team from Linden High School, who pushed their way all up to All-American status, and we want to recognize them this evening. And then we also have here in the audience four of our students who have now been accepted into the Kane Scholars Program, so that while they go to school here, they're also attending Kane University, and we want to bring them forward. I'd like to start first with the All-American team. Assistant Superintendent Paul Olivera will be taking over the presentation of them, and then after they are done, Assistant Superintendent Atiya Perkins will be introducing the Kane Scholars. Mr. Olivera?
Thank you. So, good evening, parents, students, and board members. Today, we're honoring four young men that have accomplished a great deal this year in athletics at Linden High School. We're honoring them for an amazing season. These young men have broken multiple school records, the 400-meter, the 4x4 relay, the 800 super sprint medley, and they also won for over 30 years. Linden has not won the Penn Relay, so, and that's a huge competition that everyone in the tri-state area has done. Let's give them a round of applause. If that wasn't enough, they became high school All-Americans, which is huge. So, on top of those great accomplishments, I'm going to be announcing the students' names plus the university or college that they will be attending in the fall. So, Cordell Moses will be attending Wagner College. Kevin Jenkins III will be attending North Carolina Central University. Rebey Smith and Dever Britton are going to be teammates at Felician University, so we're going to be able to see their accomplishments. Congratulations. So, we look forward to hearing about their great accomplishments as they move on to their collegiate careers and becoming All-Americans in college, which is the highest status for athletes, student athletes. So, again, let's give them a big round of applause. Congratulations.
Mr. Olivera, if you could do a money shot over there in front of the tiger thing, that'd be great. Mrs. Rosada, I think you need to be in the money shot. Now, I'd like to call up Mrs. Atiya Perkins, who will introduce our Kane Scholars.
Good evening, everyone. I am elated and just beyond excited to be able to recognize four students who have been recognized, I'm sorry, recognized as Kane Scholars. When I think of a scholar, it states that a scholar is one who will, has an expertise and will contribute to deep knowledge in our world. And another thing is, is that with, as a scholar, the community expects to hear from them, expects to grow from them. So, scholars, you have a big, big journey ahead of you, but it is clear that you are already on your way. Because as eighth graders, getting into college for your ninth grade experience through 12th grade, we are already learning from you. You've shown your perseverance, you've expanded upon on your knowledge, and more importantly, you have taken the commitment to do this. So, I say this often to many children, it's time for you to show up and show out.
Absolutely.
Because if you started, and don't ever stop. So, we're very excited to call up the four students, who I know very well because I was their principal and even elementary principal at one point. And this is a very exciting time for you and your parents, so congratulations. So, David Karamath. Victoria Vito. Alexandra Vasquez. And Jeffrey Wilkins. And I'd like to call up Ms. Principato, your vice, well, your last year, Vice Principal, and also Ms. Lewis. And then we also have our representatives from Kane. Mr. Lester, are you, you're going to come up? Because they not only have Kane swag, they'll also share some things. Alexandra?
You want to say?
Sure, I know that's right.
Good evening, everyone. I'm Jason Lester. I'm the Special Assistant to the President as well as the Executive Director of the Kane Scholar Academy. Here with me tonight is Dr. Taysein Razul Dawood. He is the Associate Director of KSA, and he is, if I'm Batman, he's Robin two times. Just a tremendous job we had. We just completed our first week of our summer orientation for the Kane Scholars Academy, and I can't say enough about David, Victoria, Alexandra, and Jeffrey. Tremendous input this week. They came in nervous, but now I think they're, I know they're tigers. As Dr. Zakowski, who is a Linden grad, tigers make great cougars. So, we're very excited about having you guys, and we have a few things for them. We have some bags with a couple of T-shirts in them. Also, being a part of the program, they also get laptops. They have the resources of Kane University, and we're really excited about it. This right here is for Jeffrey, right there, there's my guy. He has his laptop. David. Victoria. Who helps me keep Mr. Dawood in line during lunch? Okay, so, we look forward to continuing our relationship with our Linden neighbors. Again, the product that you guys produce with your support of the Board of Education, great community, great families, we look forward to working with you. You're going to turn out great people. We may be looking at the next president, the next billionaire. As long as they remember me, I'm okay.
All right.
Thank you all. Have a good night.
And I think we need a money shot over there by the tiger backdrop.
Smile, Cougars!
Thank you so much for that. It makes all of us very, very happy to see our students succeed. We love all of our students. That's why we tease out those that just go above and beyond and celebrate them so thoroughly. Proceeding on with my report, we do have the sad news that two of our former staff members have passed away. Charlene Todd started working in the Linden Board of Education in 1981. Ms. Todd was a paraprofessional in the kindergarten learning disabled class at school number five for 25 years. She retired in 2006. Very sadly, recently, Monty Brooks passed away. Monty Brooks started working in the Linden Public Schools in 1997. Mr. Brooks was a social worker who worked at McManus, Soul, Linden High School, and the Alternative Program until his retirement in 2020. On behalf of the Linden School District, we offer our most heartfelt sympathies to their families. Our thoughts are with you and your family during this very difficult time. Also, difficult is, this evening, it comes time for me to say goodbye. Ms. Perkins and I have completed our turnover. We are passing the paten as effectively as our relay team has passed in their races. And of course, I wish Atiya well and will be available for any need that she has. Tomorrow, I'll be working at home because we're closed for summer hours, but I'll finishing, I'll be finishing up paperwork that I have to do. It's probably very important to remember that there's only one superintendent, and when somebody is a superintendent, that they are responsible and accountable for the operation of the district. Once you're a former superintendent, you're no longer accountable and responsible, but the best you could do is give advice and give suggestions, and there's a world of difference between the two. I certainly know the difference, and I do respect and will thoroughly support the new superintendent just as much as everybody has supported me. I was thinking to summarize what may have happened during these nine months, but then thought better of it. If anything improved, if anything was better, then those results speak for themselves, and they don't need any recounting here. I will say that I'm a little bit anxious because there's two outstanding issues that may be metrics to define how well this school year may have gone. We still have not received our results of our CUSAC, although we have certainly gotten indicators that possibly we would have met the standards in that case, but we have not heard that officially. And then secondarily, the metric of our state test scores are very soon to be coming into the district minimally. If we're to say that we had a successful year, we want those test scores to start to go up, and so we are just going to have to wait a little bit longer to put a period and quotation marks on this year before we have that information. This evening, Madam President, that completes my remarks, but I would ask that we need to go into close for just 10 minutes to update the board on one legal matter, in which case we'll be back out and continue the meeting. Thank you.
Dr. Tomasic. I just can't go into closed session right away because this is a defining moment in my life, and I'm sure in the life of a lot of the board members here. You have taught each and every one of us a lesson. You are an amazing human being. You express the humility, wisdom, understanding, and service. This is what we needed. You were the wind beneath our wings when we were faltering. Someone asked me once what wisdom is. How does one acquire wisdom? Do you acquire wisdom just by growing older? I says, no way. Old people just grow old. But what gives you wisdom is your, is your ability to love and to suffer. They say the more you love and the more you suffer, you acquire wisdom. And I, and I saw that in you, the way you led. I saw a wise man leading our student, someone who have loved a lot in his life. And I also saw by the stuff that you did, that you have had a lot of ups and downs in your life that made you walk through the fire stronger and better. And we at Linden had an opportunity to be, to partake in the information and in the knowledge that you have imparted on us. I know, I feel confident that you have left us with enough wisdom that our school system will continue to grow and flourish. Thank you very, very, very much, Dr. Tomasic.
Thank you. Much appreciated.
And now, I am going to have Ms. Malaysia take over.
Yes. I'd like to ask the board to meet me at the podium, please. Dr. Tomasic, it has been such a pleasure for this board to work with you. You are, and I don't know if anyone has mentioned this to you, but you are a breath of fresh air. Prior to you being here, we've been met with plenty of obstacles, trials, tribulations, turbulence, chaos, but you, you came in and you understood Linden, you understood the district, and you understood how to lead us on a path forward of growth. In the last nine months, you have turned things around for us, and we can't thank you for being so honest, forward, transparent, not being one-sided, allowing us to see things differently, even though we may agree to disagree on things, but you always remain true to who you are, and we love to present you with this proclamation. Resolution, the Linden Board of Education proclamation for Rocco G. Tomasic, Educator and Doctor. Whereas, Rocco G. Tomasic, Educator and Doctor, is departing after nine months of service as an interim superintendent of schools, and whereas, on this occasion, on this occasion, it is fitting to pause and reflect in appreciation of Dr. Tomasic and his dedication and commitment to the Linden Public Schools and community. And whereas, Dr. Tomasic endeavored to an ongoing pursuit, improvement, efficiency, and excellence, ensuring all stakeholders were provided with a safe environment, post-pandemic return, and successfully filled executive certified, certificated, excuse me, and non-certificated level vacancies. And whereas, Dr. Tomasic listened to us, communicated to us, and appreciated us, and therefore, be it resolved by the Linden Board of Education, President and Linden Board of Education Members, City of Linden, County of Union, State of New Jersey, that it hereby honors and applauds the many accomplishments and unquestionable service of Rocco G. Tomasic, Educator and Doctor. Dr. Tomasic, we ask that you please come up here. I would now like to invite Mayor Derek Armstead to the podium.
Thank you so much. I guess, I have a saying, if, you don't have to be a rocket scientist to be able to build a rocket. All you need to do is find a rocket scientist, and you can have one of the best rockets ever built. To that end, we were looking for a rocket scientist, and we, we knew there was one who had retired. We brought him out of retirement to help him, to bring him to Linden so we could help straighten a few things out. To say we were on a rudderless ship is an understatement. We just had some real problems here, and we needed, we needed a fixer. And as a mayor, I think the most important part of my city is my school system because that's our future. That's your taxes. People don't want to pay taxes in a town that has a terrible school system. So, we were in trouble, and I sought out Dr. Tomasic, who I've known for years, and I knew that he would help straighten things out. I'm just thankful to have a, to have a friend like Dr. Tomasic, a person who, who, I don't know what's going on here. a person who, I don't know what's going on here, a person who I could call on in that time of crisis. He stepped into the plate. He gave us some decent direction on how to proceed forward with this Board of Education. There was chaos and confusion at these Board of Education meetings. But for nine months, I've seen nothing but progress. Progress with this board, progressed the way we are handling our business now. There's no more chaos in these meetings. He set the tone for how we should behave and conduct ourselves and how we should handle business here in town. And I'm just very thankful that you came here, Dr. Tomasic, to, you know, to help us out. And as he said, he said, "I would only do it for you, Derek." And he did. I really appreciate it. From the bottom of my heart, I appreciate it. And with that saying, I know you're passing the baton, and I would be remiss if I didn't mention that we're going to have a new superintendent, Ateo Perkins. And I'm confident, I'm confident that under Dr. Tomasic's tutelage for the last nine months, that you have learned. And Paul Olivero has learned. And I just feel so good knowing that you worked underneath Dr. Tomasic and that they're gonna be steering the ship now. And as quiet as it's kept, we're gonna keep Dr. Tomasic on retainer if necessary. Okay? You probably won't charge as much. But if you have to pick up the phone and call him, he's the type of person that you can pick up the phone and call him. And if you ever get into a jam or you're ever unsure about something, you can pick up the phone, and he will give you his advice, not so much as a former superintendent, but as a friend. He's a friend to this school district. I can never, I mean, words can't even explain how I feel about what you've done for this Board of Education. My wife will tell you, I'd be at home at night pulling out my hair, trying to figure out how we're gonna get this thing straightened out. And then one night, we said, "We gotta hire, we wanna build a rocket, we gotta hire the best rocket scientists around." And your name surfaced, and we called, and the rest is history. Thank you, thank you, thank you. God bless you and your family, and God bless this board. Just, you've been all taught by the best, okay? So as we move forward, I know we're gonna do very well here in Linden. Once again, thank you, Dr. Tomasic.
Thank you, Mayor.
Can you hear me? Okay. May I speak?
Of course.
Well, you know, Vice President did state that I could, but I just wanted to confirm with you. Okay, all right. So I know we're gonna go in the back, but I am speaking on behalf of Ms. Caporrel, Mr. Serapilia, Mr. Olivero, and your wonderful confidential secretary, Ms. Popoff. And we wanted to extend our gratitude and thanks to you, Dr. Tomasic, for all that you've done for us. We also like to give a big shout out and thank you to your wife for allowing you to spend some time with us. And when you get back home under that leadership, we wish you a wonderful time. We heard this evening, as you stated, that you're passing the baton. We've heard from the mayor where he stated that you came to straighten some things out. We believe that in this district, you are passing a torch because you helped brighten our district. You lit ideas, you strengthened systems. And as I stated in our luncheon yesterday, you held us accountable. And those are traits that do not go away. And as we stick together as a district and as a board, we're going to continue to light, and hopefully it will illuminate and continue to be as bright as Linden should be because we have a job to do for our children. So we want to just say thank you again. God bless you, and have a wonderful part two, I'm sorry, part two, of your retirement journey and everything else that you're gonna do with that. So thank you. Oh, the money shot. Come on, the money shot. The money shot. Donna, the money shot. You okay, baby? Your mother, your mother. Is she there? Is she gonna speak? No, I want her to speak next.
Yes, this is, we were actually going to open this to the public if you have anything you'd like to say. Sure.
Diane Wilverding, Sixth Ward. I went through the whole school system. Graduated, you know, high school here. And I got to know Dr. Tomasic from being on the library board. And he gave us some great ideas when we were trying to improve our handbook about safety procedures and things that I didn't think of, like active shooter and all. And he was a great asset on the library board. And that's how I got to know him. I just wanna say that I'm retired, and I absolutely love it. I'm a little shaken because I just heard about Monty Brooks, who was so nice, and he only got three years of retirement. So please, start traveling and just call in your advice. You've got to enjoy your retirement while you can. And yes, we will all miss you. You did a great job. Love you.
Thank you, Diane.
Good evening, everyone. Didn't have anything prepared, but, you know, I couldn't sit, you know, and not say... I'm very emotional tonight. My name is, first of all, my name is Dani Arlene, and I'm a parent with children at the high school. And I'm also an educator for over 25 years in our Linden School District. And I have known Dr. Tomasic for a long time. You know, he's like a father figure to me. And I called his wife Mom 'cause they've always believed in me. You know, his wife fought hard for me to travel to China twice. She wouldn't go to China without taking me 'cause she believed in me. I was the right person to lead. And this is very difficult, it really is. And I told Dr. Tomasic I would tie him up, you know, I wouldn't let him leave. But I know it's time for you to go. And this is really, I feel so... Please stay. But I know you can't stay. But we love you here. We appreciate everything that you have done. And thank you for believing in me as a new supervisor in our Linden School District. I knew I could always count on you for advice. And even when I would feel frustrated, I would go to you. You would make me feel like what I'm doing was worth it. You believed in me. And I work hard every day. I get up and go to work because I don't want to disappoint you. But I want to thank you for being a part of my life. And I know we will continue to get together and out to dinner. And thank you again. I appreciate everything you have done. Thank you.
Thank you, Dani.
Good evening, everybody. My name is Shemila Kisu, and I'm a resident of Linden. Dani made me emotional. But like everybody's saying, we've known you a long time. And we wish you nothing but love and happiness on your retirement. And saying thank you is not enough. It goes way beyond that. So thank you from the bottom of our hearts. And have a good retirement. Live every day to the best. We wish you nothing but love. Thank you, thank you.
Thank you so much. Now you know the connections that made me come back.
I know I haven't known you, Dr. Tomasic, that long, but in the brief amount of time that I've got to meet with you and talk with you on different issues, I've learned a lot, and I have to say thank you, and you should enjoy your retirement. I know I enjoy mine, so I hope you enjoy yours as much as I do mine. Thank you.
Thank you, Craig.
Anyone else? Anyone online? No? Okay, at this time, I will ask for a motion for us to go into executive session.
Motion to go into executive?
Second. Thank you. Roll call.
Ms. Thomas?
Yes.
Ms. Armstead?
Yes.
Ms. Carrillo?
Yes.
Ms. Centron?
Yes.
Mr. Dela Cruz?
Yes.
Ms. Pino?
Yes.
Ms. Rosada Casada?
Yes.
And Dr. Burgham?
Yes.
We'll be back in 10 minutes.
There's one person missing, Breanna. Okay. Finished as superintendent.
Should be on education. Oh, there's attorney report. Attorney report, and it should be on page three.
I call this meeting back to order. Motion?
Motion to come back into regular session?
Second.
Ms. Thomas?
Yes.
Ms. Armstead? Ms. Carrillo? Ms. Centron?
Yes.
Mr. Dela Cruz?
Yes.
Ms. Pino?
Yes.
Ms. Rosada Casada?
Yes.
And Dr. Burgham?
Yes. Our next agenda item is our education report.
The Education Committee upon recommendations of interim superintendent of schools and assistant superintendent presents the following motions to the Linden Board of Education for approval. I approve one through twenty-nine. I respectfully ask for a second.
Second.
Any discussion? So that we have no discussion, roll call.
Ms. Thomas?
Yes.
Armstead?
I would like to recuse myself from item seven, line three. Yes to all other agenda items.
Ms. Carrillo?
Yes.
Ms. Centron?
Yes.
Mr. Dela Cruz?
Yes.
Ms. Pino?
Yes.
Ms. Rosada Casada?
Yes.
And Dr. Burgham?
Yes.
Our next agenda item is our personal report.
The Personal Committee upon the recommendation of the interim superintendent of schools presents the following motions to the Linden Board of Education for approval. All appointments and reappointments are contingent upon and may be modified based on student participation and the district receipt of sufficient state school aid and other revenue funding. I approve numbers one through item forty-eight, and I respectfully ask for a second.
Second.
Any discussion? Roll call.
Ms. Thomas?
Yes.
Ms. Armstead?
I would like to recuse myself from agenda item eight, line one. Yes to all other agenda items.
Ms. Carrillo?
Yes.
Ms. Centron?
Yes.
Mr. Dela Cruz?
Yes.
Ms. Pino?
Yes.
Ms. Rosada Casada?
Yes.
And Dr. Burgham?
Yes.
Finance report?
Finance Committee upon recommendation of the interim superintendent of schools and the Business Administrator Board Secretary present the following motions to the Linden Board of Education for approval. I approve items one through sixty-two. I respectfully ask for a second.
Second.
Any discussion?
Could we just amend number forty-four as was recommended by a member of the public? Would that be okay?
Yes.
All of motion terminated?
Yes.
Terminated, yes. Roll call. You finish?
Ms. Thomas?
Yes.
Ms. Armstead?
Yes.
Ms. Carrillo?
Yes.
Ms. Centron?
Yes.
Mr. Dela Cruz?
Yes.
Ms. Pino?
Yes.
Ms. Rosada Casada?
Yes.
And Dr. Burgham?
Yes.
Buildings and grounds?
The Buildings and Ground and Security Committee upon recommendation of the interim superintendent of schools and the Business Administrator Board Secretary present the following motions to the Linden Board of Education for approval, looking for motions from one through number four.
Any discussion? Roll call.
Ms. Thomas?
Yes.
Ms. Armstead?
I would like to recuse myself from agenda item number four. Yes to all other agenda items.
Ms. Carrillo?
I would like to recuse myself from items one and four, and yes to all other items.
Ms. Centron?
Yes.
Mr. Dela Cruz?
Yes.
Ms. Pino?
Yes.
Ms. Rosada Casada?
Yes.
And Dr. Burgham?
Yes.
Planning and policy report?
The Planning and Policy Committee upon recommendation of the interim superintendent of schools presents the following motion to the Linden Board of Education for approval, items one and two. I respectfully ask for a second.
Second.
Any discussion? Roll call.
Ms. Thomas?
Yes.
Ms. Armstead?
Yes.
Ms. Carrillo?
Yes.
Ms. Centron?
Yes.
Mr. Dela Cruz?
Yes.
Ms. Pino?
Yes.
Ms. Rosada Casada?
Yes.
And Dr. Burgham?
Yes. Our next agenda item is comments from the public. Members of the public desiring to make a public comment may come forth at this time. For those watching online, if you may, if you wish to make a comment or ask a question, please utilize the raise your hand feature on the online meeting platform. Please begin your comments by stating your name and address. Individuals are invited to speak on one topic at a time and no individual will speak more than once until all individuals so desiring have spoken once. The public is reminded that to ensure the efficient and orderly operation of the meeting, members of the public will be limited to speaking on items for three minutes.
Craig Hallen, One Twenty Donaldson Place. I'm getting sort of puzzled about different things I hear about the state of New Jersey suing different school boards in different districts has to do with parental rights. How do the parents of our students know where this board and administration stand on parental rights and is there a way to get a copy of it? Any policies affecting parental rights?
Our policies are posted online. The current controversy deals with the, how to handle transgender students who want a different pronoun, whether that gets reported to the parent or not. That's baked into the policy. The controversy that's going on right now is that all of the model policies that came forward allowed that if the student wanted confidentiality of this, that the school district had to honor it and speak with the board attorney and decide what to do. The three districts that have challenged that have put in their policies that it was mandatory for the school district to report to the parents. And the state of New Jersey has sued them for violating the guidance that they have put out on this subject. So the legal issue will turn on, is it a constitutional right of a parent to know this information? Or is it a constitutional right of the individual student who wants to keep this confidential for whatever reason? That's where the courts are going to have to decide this issue. We have a board-approved transgender policy. It's posted online and you could see what it says at that time.
Thank you.
Ooh, I'm sorry, didn't sign in. Diane Wilverding, East Morris Avenue, right down by School Six. I want to discuss a problem, but I also have a solution. So in the morning drop-off is on, you know, Morris Avenue is not a problem, but on East Linden Avenue, that is such a busy street. And the parents park all along where the yellow curb is and then they sit there. And then you're trying to come down the street. Now you gotta go in the left-hand lane, because there's a new turning lane, to get around everybody. So I've already spoken to the police department about it and they really didn't do anything. But this last week of school, this drove me nuts. I'm coming down, this parent stops right in the active lane. Now I'm talking Linden Avenue, very busy. And she gets out of her car to let her child out, who's sitting behind her, into active traffic. She is not parked by the curb, she's parked there. Cars are honking their horn at her for doing this. And I rolled down my window as I got closer and she told me to shut up. You don't ever tell me to shut up when you're doing something wrong. So now, lady, I'm going after you because we're going to change that situation and I have the solution. At St. Michael's in Cranford, they come in, the back of the parking lot, they drop their kids off and they go out that way, okay? And they're not even on a busy street like Linden Avenue. So my solution is, you don't let anybody park where that yellow curb is. You make them come in and yes, I know the teachers park there. But if you put the lines down so that there's better parking, because when people park in a parking lot where there's no lines, people are spread all over. So if you have lines for the teachers, they'll be able to fit in there better. You don't let anybody park along that fence that separates the playground from the parking lot. So you have the cars come in from East Linden Avenue, okay? From the corner there, Wood Avenue, that way in. And then when they get closer to the entrance to the school, they stop a minute, the first four cars can let their kids out. And then they go out on to Clinton Street. You need to go right or left, whatever way you have to go. But the kids are not being endangered by being let out on the street like this woman did. And also, you gotta consider the people driving. You know, that's, it's dangerous for the cars driving and definitely dangerous for the children. Now, probably somebody's going to think about the bus. Okay, so here's the driveway. And you got the cars lined up, going in, dropping their kids off. The bus could be just beyond that to let the children off and they wouldn't interfere with the cars coming in that way. And of course, you need supervision and that's a perfect job for a vice principal. Because I know the teachers, I'm a former teacher, would be busy. So that is my suggestion because I was so, not as much upset about her telling me shut up because that wasn't going to work. But the way that she let the kid out, sitting in the seat behind her, into traffic. That was so dangerous. Now, I know this school, you could come in the back. The kids are not really let off on Wood Avenue, but you gotta come and see East Linden Avenue. Mrs., it's Perkins, right?
Yes.
Please come by and see in September. But again, hopefully you'll, you know, institute my idea. Because as a former teacher, I never let my kids say can't to me. So I'm not going to let you guys say can't to me. We gotta worry about the traffic and these kids. So please stop by and see how crazy it is. It's fine on East Morris Avenue. I don't care if I have to sit there and a kid gets out because it's not as busy. And they let the kids out quick and move on. I know for some reason they think they can just park there on East Linden Avenue. So you have two months. But please look into it because it was such a dangerous situation. And have a great summer.
Thank you.
Miss Wilverding, it's so nice hearing from you.
No, Dr. Burgam asked me if I have anything to share. I don't have that model in my head, although I think I may have trouble getting it out after that presentation. But we do have similar problems. The one that does come to my mind is school number two, where we have a greater student population there. And in frustration, sometimes parents have let their student off on the opposite side of the one-way street and the students are cutting through traffic. It's been an ongoing problem and we've looked at it very hard. But obviously, we have a very good relationship with the Linden Police Department and the chief has had us working with the Traffic Bureau on many of these problems. And certainly we'll take that on board because we do want to make sure that none of our students are injured in any capacity. So it's always worth looking at, no matter, you know, what is suggested.
Can I also just add? Being from that area and seeing the traffic, I totally understand what you're talking about. Only one problem I have using the parking lot is that we have active kids coming in through those parking lots also when they're walking in. So about using the parking lot for the traffic to go through, I also, I have to disagree there. The parking lot has to stay for the teachers. Let them park there because we have a lot of kids in the morning and during after-school leaving that do get caught up in that, in the parking lot, going in and out and it's a heavy traffic. And I understand that Linden Ave, and that became a problem when they added that left-turn lane there. That became a major problem. So I guess we will look into it, okay? But the problem became when they put that left-turn lane there and they shrunk that to a one-way coming up.
Yes, and it's easy to route children around another entrance.
Yes.
What I'm telling you is dangerous.
I totally understand.
Thank you. Anyone else?
All right, good evening. Rob Mengele, Eighteen Trinity Place, Montclair, New Jersey. Linden High School Social Studies teacher, proud LEA president. I want to take a moment, thank Dr. Tomasic for his leadership. His thoughtfulness is integral to what he brings to the district. It was, while we didn't always agree, it was a pleasure having a thought partner as we moved through the challenges this district faced together. Ms. Perkins, I'm looking forward to the same task together. As many folks said this evening, Dr. Tomasic was brought in to right the ship. And while this district is certainly in a very different place than it has been the past few years, I would be remiss if I didn't point out that the staff in the buildings, the staff that I have the honor to represent, have been the ones holding it together. The staff navigated this district. The staff throughout this district navigated in and out of pandemic teaching. We showed up with masked faces and full hearts as we worked to educate the students of Linden. We showed up to uncertain and ever-changing waters and we willed this ship forward. The staff here kept this ship afloat. This district is capable of amazing things because of the folks who work in it. And while having strong leadership is always a bonus and I hope and know we will continue to have that type of leadership, the folks who work in our buildings are the lifeblood of this district. I hope we remember that. I hope we make choices that speak to that. I like to tell my students, don't tell me, show me. And while we've worked together on a lot of things to show the staff in this district that they're appreciated, please keep that at the front of your mind as you make the choices you make over the coming year. Thank you. Have a wonderful evening. Have a wonderful summer. Dr. Tomasic, enjoy the next part of your retirement. I'll see you in July.
Thank you. Anyone else? Is there anyone online? Okay. Our next agenda item, new and unfinished business? And now we're going to go to board members' comments. Pino?
All right. Good evening, everyone. Good evening to parents, teachers and the students. We're the board members here. We appreciate your opinions and we take them all into consideration for what you come up here to say. All I can say is wow, taking Ms. Perkins' word. Because yes, we have conquered, we have did what we set to do. And I want to reach out to the teachers and tell them thank you for giving them the tools that I asked and I suggested to give to the students. Because all of our kids from the pre-K all the way to graduation to the high school, they did it, they conquered, they did what they had to do. And I am so proud of them and I'm so proud of each and every one of you guys because you guys did it. You know, you did it, you pulled them through and all our children is reaching for the stars. And that's what we want them to do. Nobody's perfect. We're going to make mistakes. And once we make mistakes, brush yourself off and get back up and say it's okay. I can do better than what I did next time. I can do better because I am better. And Dr. Tomasic? Hi. Thank you.
Thank you.
I have not known you that long, but from the times that we met, I appreciate it. You answer my texts. You appreciate me and I appreciate you as well. And it is going to be a hard pill, but it's okay because Ms. Perkins got your back, she got our back. And we appreciate Ms. Perkins as well. And you got some big shoes to fill, but it's okay. She got it.
Yes, she does.
And you left her with all the tools that she needs to be what she has to do. And wow, Ms. Perkins. Wow, thank you. We appreciate you. And it's no turning back from here. We all reaching for the stars. So therefore, you pull me up, I pull you. And my motto is each one teach one. Teach me, I teach you. You got me, I got you. Okay? Dr. Tomasic, I hate to see you leave, but I understand. You're retiring. Please don't have a pina colada. Please have Patron Margarita. I would appreciate it because that's what I like, okay? That's what I like to drink. So I would like for you to drink that. That pina colada is overrated and we all know that. So, okay? So thank you very much. And to my board members, y'all are the greatest. We came and we did what we had to do. We took punches and we kept it moving. And we took a lot of punches and you know that. And we kept it moving. We kept our opinions to each other. We didn't fight outside. We did what we had to do. My love, thank you. Welcome back and we love you, okay? And one more thing, I'm so sorry. I have my deepest condolences for Ms. Todd and Mr. Brooks. We have our deepest condolences to the families and we have our deepest sympathies. Thank you very much, everyone. Have a good night and enjoy your summer. And remember, we rock. Linden rocks. Okay, so let's keep rocking, okay? Good night, everyone, and enjoy your evening.
Ms. Diana?
I just want to say thank you, guys, for the welcome. For me, this is something more than an obligation. It's my duty, it's my pleasure to be here to keep fighting for the kids, to have a voice for the kids of our city. We need to keep doing better and we will keep doing it. Thank you. I will make, I'll be here. I'll be here and thank you for all your support. It's good to know that you are backed up for people like all of you. Thank you so much. Have a great night, guys.
Okay, my condolences goes out to the Todd family and the Brooks family. Sorry for your loss. It's never, never an easy time when you lose somebody. But may God get you through this tough time. Also, congratulations to our King students slash scholars. That's a big task. Congratulations and hope to hear more from you in the future. And our Relay Team All-American status kids. You guys aren't kids anymore. You guys are young adults going into college. If you'd succeeded here in high school, I'm sure you're going to succeed in college. Congratulations. Keep moving forward. I've been on the board now, coming to, I think the end of my term is coming close in December. And we've been through one superintendent, an interim superintendent, and now we're going to go through another. We're going to get another new superintendent. So in my terms of three years, usually on one term, somebody goes through one superintendent. I got the pleasure to go through three. We'll get to know Dr. Tomasic. These last nine months have been amazing. We went from a rocky ship to a ship that has settled straight. We still have some rocking here and there, but we've worked it together. Thank you for this past nine months. It's been a thrill. You'll be missed. I wish I could take some years off you, keep you here longer. But hey, we got to close the chapter and start a new chapter.
Thank you.
Congratulations and wish you the best. Ms. Perkins, I've known you from School Six as a principal. So we go back a little, okay? I congratulate you for getting where you're at now. I congratulate you for getting where you're at now. I'm sure you're not going to have a problem filling Dr. Tomasic's shoes. And one thing I did when I came into the board not too long ago, I looked up at the pictures, and I looked for Dr. Tomasic. You don't look anything like that picture.
Shoveled away.
So I think we'll have to add another picture as interim. But I look forward from July 1st on, at least for the next six months, and if I have another term, another term with you. And moving forward, I want this district to continue moving forward. We want to reach for the stars in this district, and the parents and the staff that we have out there. If it isn't for the same parents that we see face, we see it here, we see it in PTA. Because I know the high school PTA sees the same faces all the time. We see it in every school, the same faces. Same people that support, they come here also to support us, because we see the same faces. I do thank you, guys, because we cannot see everything. And your board does make mistakes, we're human. But we will try to fix the mistakes that we make to move forward. We learn, it makes us stronger. And once again, I'll thank my board also. We've been here three years, Malaysia and Jennifer. We miss Jennifer. La Mari and Ms. Pino, we've been here, what, two years?
Yes.
And my other newly board members, we've been here one year. Hopefully, I get to share another couple, even though I'm the only man between all you women. But it's been a thrill. I love it, and I'll keep on moving forward as I can. Thank you very much, have a great night.
Good evening, everyone. I would like to start off by expressing my condolences to the family of Ms. Todd and Mr. Brooks. Also, a big congratulations to all award recipients, to those in sports, and to those taking a big step in their educational career. To all students and staff, please enjoy your summer. To all graduates, congratulations. And to all retirees, congratulations. As a product of the Linden education system, I am very thankful to have been part of this school year, and I'm excited for the next. Thank you for the warm welcome with all. Dianeara, welcome back.
Thank you.
Nice to see you. And Dr. Tomasic, even though I've only known you for a very short time, I would like to say that you are very professional and very approachable. And that has been awesome to receive as a new member on the board. I thank you for that very much. And even though I may be a little quiet, I do kind of soak everything up like a sponge. And I really do thank you for the experience thus far. You have shaped the way I see working as a group and what loving your career looks like. So thank you for that.
Thank you.
And as someone who has provided us with the best, I certainly wish you the best. And to Ms. Atiya Perkins, I am very excited to work with you. Thank you.
Good evening, everyone. Thank you to everyone, both regulars that always attend, and the new faces that I see here today. We're always happy to hear your concerns and to see you guys at each of these meetings. I would first like to offer up my condolences to Charlene Todd and Monty Brooks, who was also my neighbor. So it was just really a reminder of how short life is, and it definitely made me more appreciative of the life that, you know, I've been blessed with. So definitely offering up my condolences. A great congratulations to all of our students. They're so amazing. Every time I get to see them, and it's for something so positive, it really does make my day. I love coming to the board meetings when we're doing, I love all the board meetings, but specifically the ones where we're awarding our students. And I would also like to say, "Welcome back, Dianeara. We missed you so much." And it's refreshing to sit across from you and see your beautiful face. So thank you. Now, Dr. Tomasic, or as I would like to call you, Dr. T. There's no easy way to say goodbye, but I am grateful that I had the opportunity to serve alongside you on the Board of Education. To say you're intelligent is an understatement, and I'm always in awe by how eloquently you handle yourself and answer questions at every board meeting. It's inspiring, and it pushes me to want to become more knowledgeable. In addition to being smart, you were kind, helpful, stern when needed, and have given proper leadership to myself and the board. Your leadership, in my opinion, has effectively saved a sinking ship and has done wonders not only for our district, but for our taxpayers. So thank you for always being there, for always answering all of my many, 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 many questions, for always overextending yourself, and for always allowing the board and myself to walk into these meetings with the utmost confidence. I had such an amazing experience working with you. And this is, I really gained so much knowledge and insight from you. So just thank you for being you. Thank you for being genuine. I really am so excited for your retirement. So even though we will still continue to call, I have plenty of intentions of calling you, but I want you to really enjoy your retirement, because it is well-deserved. And to Mrs. Perkins, I said it at the last board meeting, I have the utmost confidence in you, and you really are an inspiration to a young woman like myself to see what you've accomplished throughout your career. So I am really looking forward to working alongside of you as well. So thank you all.
Good evening. Thank you all for attending our Board of Education meeting. First, I would like to congratulate the Relay Team for the All-American status, the four students being accepted to King University, and also my condolences to the family and loved ones of Charlene Todd and Monty Brooks. Being present for the different graduations this month was exciting and rewarding to see so many happy faces from both the students and the family members. What a great accomplishment, and I wish them all the best in continuing their education. During the high school ceremony, Dr. Burghammer asked for the students who had earned their scholarships to stand up. It was pleasing to see so many students standing proudly and representing their tiger pride. Dr. Tomasic stated that he was the superintendent when that particular class had started school, and now being present as an interim superintendent as they, the students and Dr. Tomasic himself, finished together, was heartfelt. I would like to thank you, Dr. Tomasic, for stepping in and helping us when this district needed it the most. You have left an honorable legacy in Linden. From a famous quote from Plato, "Do not train a child to learn by force or harshness, but direct them to it by that, by what amuses their minds, so that you may be better able to discover with accuracy the peculiar bent of the genius of each." In closing, I hope that the students that do have summer school are able to successfully complete the programs. For the rest of the students, enjoy your summer, and also make sure to complete the summer reading program assignments. Thank you all, and enjoy your evening.
Okay, good evening, everyone. Thank you all for coming out this evening. I'd like to extend my condolences to the Todd and Brooks family. I'd also like to congratulate our student athletes and our eighth-grade King University scholars. It just goes to show that our district is moving forward in the right direction. There have been many meetings, committee meetings, that I've attended and learned numerous things and activities and curriculum building and security measures that are in place to help push us forward. There was a time while I sat on this board where I didn't receive such information, or the growth just wasn't there. Dr. Tomasic, you stepped in in a time of need, and I've mentioned all of those things earlier, but again, can't appreciate you more. We really were in a difficult situation, and you definitely helped us iron things out and get on a better path. So I thank you for that.
Thank you.
Mrs. Perkins, you're an amazing woman. And I know that many of your students and colleagues and board members look up to you. And we are happy to have you lead this district. And we look forward to the year ahead. And we cannot wait to see all that you and your staff have instored for our students. To my board members, thank you for constantly fighting to push and put our students forward in this district. It's never easy, but we get it done. So I appreciate you all for that. That concludes my board comments. Everyone, you have a great evening, a great summer, a happy holidays, if you celebrate. And we will see you in July. Thank you.
Thank you. Life is not a journey. Life is not a destination, it is a journey. And this year's journey, for this school board, was full of grief, joy, sadness, and congratulation. We have had a lot happen this year, and we were there to experience it. As we just mentioned, we had a graduation. And our graduation showed that there is a lot of amazing things going on in our school district. We hear some negative things that occur. But the negative things are so insignificant compared to all the great things that happen in our school district. I am not saying that we should downplay it. But when you think about the great things, we had approximately 425 students graduate from high school. Over 75 of them got scholarships. Our scholarships were about $3.7 million. We had over 300 students or 400 students that actually start in college. Linden is doing a lot of great things. I got several calls from teachers and parents telling me that the middle school students are so excited. They can't wait to start high school. They can't wait to start applying for scholarships and getting it together. We are on the right track. And the reason why we are here is because of you, because of our teachers, our administrators, because of our parents, because of the people that cook food for our students. We are here, and we see you. We appreciate you, and we believe in you. Dr. Tomasic, I thank you. I thank you very, very much for what, for how you have served this district. Ms. Perkins, we expect great things from you. Our student, the people of Linden, the board, we all going to work together. We are not going to work as one. We're going to have synergy, and we're going to move forward strong and together. I thank you very, very much for coming to this meeting tonight. And Sam, I don't want to make a mistake again. You know, I always get so caught up, I forget to end properly. So I want to thank you, everyone. Have a good holiday. Do something for this holiday. Take your kids out, do a lot, have fun. And we are going to see some of you guys back when our school year begins in September. Thank you very much. I would like to adjourn the meeting with someone.
Motion to adjourn?
Second.
We'll call it?
Ms. Thomas?
Yes.
Ms. Armstead?
Yes.
Ms. Corrello?
Yes.
Ms. Centron?
Yes.
Mr. Dela Cruz?
Yes.
Ms. Pino?
Yes.
Ms. Rosada Kisada?
Yes.
And Dr. Burghammer?
Yes. Meeting adjourned.